I'm going to call this meeting to order of the Mayor and Board of Commissioners for June 23, 2021, for our annual budget meeting. Can I get the roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Braun?
Yeah.
Commissioner Pearson?
Here.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Here.
Commissioner Warnock?
Here.
Will let the record show that you do have a court.
Will you rise with me for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Lord, whom we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bow your heads with me for a brief prayer.
Father God, I come to you tonight on behalf of our town. I ask that you watch over our citizens, Lord. I ask that you watch over our elected body and their families and our staff, Lord, as we're here this evening to look over these finances and as we leave later this evening. In Jesus' name, amen.
All right. First on the agenda is a public presentation of the fiscal year 2022 budget. Town Administrator, do you have that?
Yes, I do.
Can I, can I say, ask you something, sir?
Sure, absolutely.
I've asked Calvin, just since we've had the budget for two and a half weeks and it's been public for that long, if we could just go over the highlights of any changes.
Since the meeting two, three weeks ago, or two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, so that we don't, if we haven't reviewed it all by now, then the public hasn't come forward and asked any questions, to the best of my knowledge.
Are you guys okay with that?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Town Administrator, thanks, Albie.
All right. So generally speaking, the biggest, the biggest changes that occurred from this document, from the one you had before, was this is our first year of transitioning from the way we used to do the budgets in Excel documents. Although this is an Excel document, in the past, all the data was populated by multiple sheets down below. What was that?
Somebody's alarm.
Maybe one of our alarms.
It's not mine.
Just a moment.
Can't be mine.
Let's stop it.
I'm gonna say that's definitely a Mopar. Warnock.
Commissioner Warnock, could you assist Commissioner Pearson in his part?
How the hell did that happen?
Yeah.
You're all set.
Okay.
I T D.
Sorry for the interruption, sir.
Continue, Cal. Thanks.
All right. Well, that concludes the budget report. No, in all seriousness, the old way, the previous way, at least for the first 14 years or so that I've been here, we've been using an Excel database. But once we brought Judy on board and we brought all the financial accounting in-house and we've invested, if you remember, two years ago, we invested a good chunk of money to get a state-of-the-art financial software program, we tried to slowly integrate everything that was in the Excel database into the software and allow the software to do the work of printing out the budget. So in essence, what you're seeing here is data that is populated in the software where it gets exported to an Excel document. But anyone who's ever been involved in software programs that export to Excel, they're not, they're not sort of the prettiest thing in the world. They're not that easy to be able to navigate through. So what Judy has done is, you know, put some lines in there, spread it out a little bit to make it a little bit more manageable to read. So in doing that, we had to go back through with a fine-tooth comb from what you guys got and made sure that, you know, what we wanted it to be was what it was saying. In other words, it's that old saying that, you know, bad data in is bad data out. And so we had to make sure that we had everything in the, in the M I P software system so that it would export out here properly. So with that said, we have a balanced, on the general fund, we have a balanced budget with roughly a $16,000 surplus in the budget. There are reserve fund transfers in there to balance that because one of the things we are taking into account this year is the two stimulus packages that the federal government has been talking about. One, I believe, is the American Recovery Plan. And then the second one, it escapes me here, what the second one is called, the, I can't find what, the American Rescue Plan and the American Jobs Plan. The American Rescue Plan has already been out. There is speculation that we're going to be getting some money that has to be earmarked for certain things. And then the American Jobs Plan is one that President Biden and the Senate and the House are trying to negotiate how much that's going to be and what it's going to cover. So what we have always learned, or at least what I've always learned, in whatever you get grant monies for things, they really like it when you're shovel-ready and you've accounted for it. So what that means is we put a lot of things in this budget that could hypothetically be covered by those funds. But as I've always said before, if we don't get the funds, we won't do those things. So an example of that is, Augie, you've been here a long time, we've needed a new roof on this town hall for a long time. This is our opportunity to, to spend a large amount of money to be able to get that done instead of putting Band-Aids on it. So there's an expense in the budget for putting a new roof on town hall. The other big-ticket items is moving the public works garage from its current location down to the wastewater treatment plant. Unfortunately, the costs on that have increased a little bit because of the, the issues in the construction industry. So it's, it's going to be a little bit more expensive to do that, but we have, that is budgeted in here. We're looking to get our police department up to full staffing. So there, there is two officer positions accounted for. Several years ago, Commissioner Shepherd and Commissioner Warnock, you remember this, we started purchasing equipment for our public works department to be able to do work themselves instead of spending almost as much as we would spend for the purchase of a piece of equipment to have a contractor come in here and be able to do a limited amount of pothole repairs, sidewalks and all. But one of the problems we're running into is we really need more personnel to be able to do that. So our public works department is going to be filling a vacancy and then adding one position to that there. So the budget reflects that. The other thing that we did in the budget is it is, it is very difficult right now to hire police officers, and we know that for a variety of different reasons. But one of the problems we always had is that going back many years, our salaries, especially our starting salary, was lagging behind what the state police would pay, the county sheriffs would pay, and then even in some cases, what some of the other communities would be paying. So we made, this budget reflects hiring those police officers at a more competitive salary, but also making the retention of the good officers that we have now more sustainable by getting their salaries up to around the areas that are competitive. We need to get more competitive. I think we can all agree that one of the reasons we have likely had some turnover at our police department over the years is because if you get, you know, you know, in Cecil County, if there's 25, 30 people who desire to be a police officer, but our starting salaries at the bottom end of that, I hate to say it this way, but you're really not getting the cream of the crop or the pick of, you know, the litter, so to speak. And, and I think that is, has a lot to do with why we've had some officers that have not, we've not been able to sustain them. So we're making our police department more competitive so we can continue to provide the great public safety that we do for the community. In terms of new vehicles, we're replacing one police car and the public works is in need of a dump trailer. The dump trailer is what we use to collect yard waste. That trailer is about 12 years old now, and we're starting to spend a lot of money and maintenance on that. So our budget does include doing that. The budget also includes a very aggressive street repaving program, as we talked about. Our engineering estimates were anywhere from $700,000 to $950,000 for this project. So that's why last night I had you vote on a resolution that would authorize me to award the contracts, the bid, based upon the recommendation from the engineer, but I had you award it at the high end of basically a $100,000 annual payment for this street repaving program. We're keeping our fingers crossed that it will come in lower than that. The other items that we have in here is down at the Diddy Richards Park, where we have our water treatment plant, the well system. There's that one building that is, we've been trying to fix for a couple of years now. We have in the budget to tear that down, seal off the well. With the idea that the public works garage is going to be moving over to the sewer plant, we would relocate the fuel tank that's there so there's no need for that little building. And then we were going to spend some money on fixing up the existing treatment facility. For the mayor's, one of the things the mayor has talked about, it's, the money that we set aside is not really allocated to retrofit that building for some other purpose. It's just to clean it up at this point. If we want to go down the road of retrofitting it for another town purpose, we would either, you know, apply for grant money, find some surplus in our budget, or wait for it in the next budget cycle to be able to do that. Trying to think here of some of the other highlights here. We, we have been very successful over the years with our community outreach. We're, we're getting great turnout at Sunfest, great turnout at Spooktacular, great turnout at Winterfest. In order to do this the right way, it's a lot different than it used to be. And just for the purposes of residents knowing this, for all of those functions, the actual hard costs that we spend is upwards of about, maybe close to $20,000 in hard costs, not including the overtime that we pay for employees to be out there. So in order to have this great Winterfest, Spooktacular, and Sunfest, we've had to grow our budget that way to be able to provide those amenities to our residents. Judy, is there any, any high-level stuff that I've missed in terms of big expenditures? Anything new?
Board of Directors.
Again, I'm just trying to give you the highlights of it. We, we tried to anticipate and pick off the list all the things that need to be done over the years. We did put a lot of money, I talked about getting additional public works employees. We did put a lot of money aside for the actual purchase of concrete, for us to be able to do the sidewalks. For instance, I think we budgeted $10,000 in purchase of concrete. In the past, we would pay $10,000 for a contractor and he'd come in and do maybe 200 lineal feet of sidewalk work. With our people doing it ourselves and us now having the equipment, we can do a lot of sidewalk work for $10,000. Same thing with the pothole repairs. We have a sizable amount of money in purchasing Blacktop to be able to go out and get proactive on pothole repairs also.
I didn't know people to mention that in proprietary lines. Honestly, there's no increasing water rates in sort of this budget. If that's something we wanted to mention.
Which portion of it?
On the proprietary lines, the budget was based on current.
Yes. The sewer and water revenue is based upon what the rate is right now. Every, every, you know, we put in there that we will follow the five-year gradual raising of the rates, but we did not assume that that's going to happen in this budget. So it is at the current rate structure that it is now on it. Again, anyone who looks at this budget, they're going to see large transfers of money. That again is just to be able to put a placeholder on the expense side for some of the stuff we'd like to be able to do under the federal government infrastructure. One of the things I will, will leave you with is, in terms of the sewer fund, we are, we are running bare minimum on the sewer fund here. As you know, we delayed doing rate increases over the years. We brought it up. We're still one module behind or one step increase behind, but we don't have a whole lot of flexibility on the sewer side. One of the things we are going to do is our third-party operator cost has gone up significantly. We are going to see if we can't get that down. The problem is that in today's environment, what I'm hearing is there's a very small handful of third-party companies that will manage the sewer plants. We talked before about getting our own wastewater treatment operator. The question is finding that person and being successful with it. One of the things I will say, the benefit of the third-party operator, and I'm, I'm going to make this a general statement, we always hope that you hire good employees. But like any business, sometimes you think you've hired a good employee, but they don't work out. The thing that I get uncomfortable about is because of the regulatory requirements we have with the wastewater treatment plant and how temperamental that can be, and the fact that we get grant money from the state for operating the sewer plant at an above-average level, I get a little hesitant about hiring someone that initially we think is really, really good, and all they have to do is mess up a couple of reports and we could be sideways with the sewer plant like we were in the past. So I'm not saying that we can't do it because there's obviously some communities that have their own wastewater treatment operators. And I think down the road, we'd like to do that. I'm just hesitant with our budget being so close right now to inadvertently have an unintended consequence of getting sideways with our sewer plant or losing the grants.
Cal, Calvin, just to, if memory proves me correct on this, okay, the majority of wastewater operators tend to go with higher gallonage wastewater systems than what we presently have, or project into the future, because the cost of, of the third party is less expensive than getting into the actual wastewater operator. If that's changed, I don't think it has, correct me, but that's, that's the validation for why we're, we're doing what we're doing.
Yeah. I mean, when you look at our third-party operators cost, you still can't get around the $33,000 in annual testing that has to be done. So even if you hire your own guy, and I would think that your own guy or gal, with all your overhead, you're probably looking at maybe $70,000 to $80,000 anyway. So then you throw the $30,000 on top of that for your laboratory testing, and you're within like $20,000, $30,000 of what the third party is, is charging you, but at least you have the peace of mind that quite frankly, if the third party messes up, you're going after the third party's liability insurance for that, as opposed to our own people. So I'm not saying it's out of the question, and I think someday we should get to that point. I'm just not so sure that now's the time to do it when we're so close on everything else. So that, that concludes, you know, my summary overview of the budget.
One of the things that I wanted to mention, Cal, and this is something that Commissioner Warnock was just talking about, was I talked to someone at M M L, and a lot of these communities that don't tape their meetings are having to invest in equipment. And if we decide to purchase a camera system that we would keep here, that would actually be a COVID-related expense, because a lot of these communities are transitioning that way because they know there are some citizens out there that won't come back to a formatted meeting. So that's something to look into if we're able to do that.
Yeah. So, and you, and I'm sorry, just, the other thing that we've done is the budget includes replacing a lot of our old security cameras and getting them more ideal, especially on the police side. The police side has a really old security system. I think it goes all the way back to Al Michaels when he was the chief here.
Now it goes back past Al.
Yeah. So it's an old system. So we have money in there to upgrade the security system also.
Any more questions for Calvin? All right. Can I get a, excuse me, I guess we're going to business meeting items because, do we have anyone online for citizens input, Cal?
No, I, I have not seen anybody logged in here.
Okay. Well, there's Resolution 2021-04, which is fiscal year budget and collection rates. Town Administrator, do you have that?
Yes. Let me bring that up. You have Resolution 2021-04, a resolution adopting an annual budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2021 through June 30 of 2022, and an authorizing collection of taxes here and levied assessing service charges and appropriating funds for the fiscal year. I'll skip the boilerplate at the beginning and go to the fourth, whereas, whereas the town has received notice from the Maryland Department of Assessments and Taxations that the final taxable net assessable real property base for the town of Rising Sun will increase by roughly $5,498,014. And with the previously adopted real estate tax rate to be maintained at .46 per $100 of assessed value, the town is projected to receive total real estate tax revenue of And whereas the town of Rising Sun, like other small municipalities, the municipalities provides basic services such as street and sidewalk maintenance, parks, trash collection, and other amenities to our residents. However, Rising Sun is rather unique in the amount of other services that are provided to real estate revenues, such as daily police patrols and protection, weekly trash, recycling, yard waste collection, movies in the park, Sunfest, Spooktacular, winter extravaganza, shop with the cop, tiger trot, Little League parade, Carol sing, and other family fun activities, all while still maintaining the fourth lowest overall tax rate of all Cecil County towns and the second lowest real estate tax burden per resident in Cecil County. Whereas the past year has been difficult on, on our town and our residents, but we all look forward to getting back to normal and the opportunity to continue to move our community forward. Our community has begun to dig itself out of the decades-long water and sewer moratorium and is now enjoying a revitalization and rebirth of our town. The elected body is committed to meeting these challenges and improving upon the services and quality of life of our residents, while keeping our tax rate per person is one of the lowest in the county. Whereas the mayor and commissioners have been working diligently with the state and federal government in positioning the town to be able to receive federal funding as part of the various federal funding initiatives that have been created to offset the economic impacts of, of the COVID-19 pandemic. And to further set in motion a plan for the use of those funds to improve the town and to create a business-friendly environment while also maintaining a safe community for our families and residents. And whereas the mayor and commissioners will continue to invest in our community in ways that have already shown to be beneficial, as played out by the number of new businesses opening the resale value of homes in our community and the increased volume of construction investments being made in many of our residential developments. And whereas although the last two decades have been challenging, the patience and resiliency of our residents and businesses has clearly pushed our community to the front of the line as a place to raise a family and operate a business. Whereas into that end, the mayor and commissioners have developed an annual operating budget for primary governmental and proprietary fund activities for fiscal year 2022, see attached, that are designed to make investments in our infrastructure, Main Street revitalization, repave our roads, fix sidewalks, and offer additional amenities and services to our residents. And whereas the primary governmental fund has a balanced budget by way of a, of a reserve fund transfer to reflect expenditures that will be tied to the American Rescue Plan and the American Jobs Plan, the fund has a total revenue projection of roughly $2,358,401.66 and a projected expenditures of $2,341,740.40 and will result in a surplus of roughly $16,701.26 in the primary governmental fund. Whereas the proprietary funds has a balanced budget by way of reserve fund transfers to reflect expenditures that will be tied to the American Rescue Plan and the American Jobs Plan, the fund has total revenue projections of $2,253,850 and projected expenditures of $2,236,411.35 and will result in a surplus of roughly $17,438.65. And whereas this budget will be based upon the following already established tax rates and service charges as follows. The tax rate for all real property not otherwise exempted and located within the corporate limits of the town of Rising Sun will be .46 for each $100 of assessed value as approved in Resolution 2021-01. The Cecil County Department of Finance will collect the real property and debt service and utility tax on behalf of the town of Rising Sun. The town will continue to provide a 2% discount upon payment in full of any real property tax if taxes are paid in full by the end of July 2021, and a 1% penalty each month for any payments received after October 1 of 2021 and until the balance is paid in full. Such taxes on land and improvement shall be computed on the valuation of said properties as certified to the town of Rising Sun by the Maryland State Department of Assessments. The tax rate for all tangible personal property of businesses, utilities, or contract carriers operating in the corporate limits of the town of Rising Sun shall remain at .90 cents per 100 of assessed value of all tangible operating personal property, including commercial inventory. In computing and levying such taxes on tangible personal property, the valuation of said properties as certified to the town of Rising Sun by the Maryland State Department of Assessments shall be used as the assessed valuation of tangible personal property. The town will maintain the existing flat $384.36 debt service and utility tax assessment on real property that is currently developed or is vacant and not developed, but can be developed in accordance to the town zoning code unless such property is declared non-developable and currently exempted, as spelled out in Resolution 2016-10. The purpose of this assessment is to cover the costs related to debt service financing of town buildings, parks, property, pass utility upgrades, vehicle streets, and sidewalk restorations, regardless of the type of service provided, the level of services, or the lack thereof. The assessment will be reflected on the annual real property tax bill issued by the county and will be subject to the same discounts and penalty fees as real property tax. Number seven, some revenue projections, as shown in this budget, are related to fees as indicated in the town's current fee schedule as set by resolution from time to time by the Board of Commissioners. Number eight, the town's utility rates will continue to follow the prescribed five-year phased-in rate plan in place. Number nine, discount for early payment of utility bills, failure to pay utility bills, building permits, and other service fees due, the town will continue to be spelled out in the town's adopted fee schedule, which can be amended from time to time by resolution of the mayor and commissioners. Therefore, being enacted in a resolve that the mayor and commissioners of the town of Rising Sun wish to adopt, the proposed 2021-2022 annual budget to include the tax rates and service charges as set forth, now therefore being further resolved that the mayor and commissioners have passed, approved, and adopted this resolution on the 23rd day of June 2021. Mayor, there's one thing I'd like to add real quick to that that I think really needs to be emphasized. First of all, the personal property tax of 90 cents, that goes back probably 25, 30 years. First of all, the personal property tax of 90 cents, that goes back probably 25, 30 years. The town has never raised it, and we are really at the lower end of all the other towns in the county in terms of how much they charge for personal property tax. So that hasn't been changed. The other thing I think it's important to note is that in the collection of the real estate taxes, the 2% discount, we, I believe, are the only town left in the county that is still giving residents a 2% discount if they pay their taxes by July 21st. I don't even believe Cecil County itself is giving the county residents a 2% discount.
They got them for a few years ago. They got rid of that a few years ago.
Yes. So I just wanted to emphasize, and I always like to throw it to the board all the time that, you know, this is a very respectful budget process, and we always keep into account the impact that it has on residents, and we do try as much as possible to put the, put the control of how much people pay more in the hands of the residents by providing them discounts for early payments, so forth and so on. So I just wanted to make sure that people realize that we are still doing that in this budget.
Thank you, Town Administrator. I know I speak for the board when we say thank you to you and to Judy as well for all your hard work on this fiscal year's budget. Could I get a motion to approve Resolution 2021-04?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-4, the adoption of a 22-year fiscal year budget.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. I think we've already discussed everything. So all in favor?
Aye.
Pass this. Thank you. All right. And I have no report this evening, surprisingly. Would any of the commissioners like to speak this evening?
I'd just like to say thank you, Calvin, Judy, and all your hard work, as well as the other town staff downstairs. I know everybody has been working hard on this, and I appreciate your time and prioritization for this budget.
Thank you.
Let me, let me say this, as the historian part of it. I have been through the nightmares of different budgets.
Right.
Prior to Calvin coming, this is the first year that it's been the easiest to read.
Right.
Your combination of whatever you're doing is working, because the simple person can read this budget
Right.
and understand it. And that was a goal.
By simple person, you mean you.
Me. You know, you don't have to have an accounting degree to look at this. You can be an average person, pick this up and understand it, and see where money's being spent and all. Compared to the way it used to be when we were handed a two-page budget, that was it. You didn't ask questions. You didn't have the opportunity to do anything or make any changes. So thank you.
Augie, I'll add one thing, and I know you and I talked about this before. The interesting thing about that two-page budget is they would also, they would often have like $150,000 in miscellaneous expenses. I always thought that was rather interesting.
And nobody could ever ask the question, where's it going?
Yeah.
Miscellaneous.
Yeah, well, yeah. We'll leave it at this.
Yeah.
Is there any more discussion amongst the board? All right. Hearing none, could I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Shepard actually got you. Shepard and Warnock, motion to adjourn.
Wait a minute. So you made the motion?
All in favor?
So it was Shepard and Augie, because I made a motion, so, but there we go.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.
Is it off?